Hey, good afternoon, everyone. I call this committee of the whole Monday, June 12th, 2023, 1:00 P. M. To order and to acknowledge we are on the traditional territory of the Chehalis. The next order of business, please.
Sorry, worship.
Yeah.
The next order of business is the introduction of late items, and there are none.
I just want to actually, I think I'm going to use this spot here, and I think it's important just to acknowledge that council has appointed Chief Administrative Officer position, and that's to Tyson Cook. Tyson has been the Operations Manager for a number of years here, and for the last number of months, he's been in the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer and the Operations Manager position. So I just want to congratulate him on that, and I would also like to acknowledge that we have our, we have our corporate officer, Amanda Graham, who has joined us for her first day today. I'll do some more formal acknowledgements at our next regular meeting of council. So the next, absolutely. Welcome. So the next order of business then, please.
The next, sorry, then, the next order of business is the approval of the agenda.
Do I have a mover? Moved by Counselor Fazio, seconded by Counselor Jackson. Call the question, all in favor. Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
The next item for business is the items for discussion, and we have Superintendent Davy Lee from the Upper Fraser Valley Regional District regarding the Upper Fraser Valley Regional District Strategic Plan 2022 to 2025.
Thank you. And I welcome Superintendent Davy Lee.
Good afternoon, your worship, counselors and staff. As noted, Davy Lee, Superintendent Officer in Charge of the Upper Fraser Valley Regional Detachment, here to discuss with you folks regards to our strategic plan going forward, 23 to 20, I'll be honest, they're supposed to three-year plan, so by the time we get this done, probably close to the end of the year, so it might push out to 2026, actually, so. But that being said, we, this is the probably third council I've been to. I've been, we're in the process of developing this plan, and throughout the processes, there's different stages of the process. We've gone through internal surveys, external surveys, also we held town hall meetings, as your worship remembers up in here for, and now we're into our stakeholder engagement piece. So I have the privilege of coming before all the elected councils, all five of them in our detachment area, to gather your thoughts on our strategic plan. So there's a series of questions I'm going to ask you. There's seven in total, and I'm just listening to some feedback regards to what your opinions are, and we'll take that all back to us. And in the fall this year, by September this year, from just a quick timeline, we're looking at now consolidating all the information we have, and of course managing all that and identify the placing priorities, how we're going to carry that out for the next three years. That being said, likely maybe some won't make it all, but that being said, like I said, we're trying to see the themes, and then of course, tackle in a number of parties that we can actually physically work on, because again, it's almost as I'd be 30 priorities when you, that's impossible to hit 30 priorities, right? So, but we will gather enough that the form that means potatoes of our strategic plan moving forward.
Thank you. See, did you want to, you're going to start with the questions?
Yes, you have the questions before you. I believe we have present, presented out, so just to give you some background and some thought to it, but that being said, yeah, the question number one, from a safety perspective, what is the number one issue that your local RCMP needs to address?
The council member? Counselor, Counselor Vidal. Here, here comes your new mic.
The community meeting that was held here, I believe a couple of weeks ago, and what seemed to be an underlying theme was traffic and speeding issues down Hot Springs Road and coming south down Rockwell Drive, where you then come around the corner on to Lilawatt. That was, in my opinion, there was numerous residents who brought up that that was a concern for them. Thank you.
Thank you. May further, Counselor Fazio?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Good afternoon. I've already been through this at the regional district, but I'll give it another shot. Um, one of the concerns for many years, Superintendent, has been speeding, has just been brought up, is the speeding of the logging trucks. Not just on Rockwell Drive. I used to be a school bus driver, and many years ago, I purposely went into a ditch to save the bus from being hit by a, by a logging truck. I think people tend to forget, not just the loggers, but locals and visitors tend to forget, I believe, from the corner of Lilawatt and Rockwell, the, the signs used to be 40 clicks. I think it's still the same. How, and that goes a quite a way. It's, it's a concern. We get some between 18 and 20 logging trucks come through the village, either full or empty, coming the other way. And of course, the, the RCMP have done a great job of policing the school zone in, in the village, which is very important, controlling that, and, but I would say the number one is the speeding. I know you don't have the manpower to, to look at McCombs Drive as well. That's a secondary route outside, out of Harrison to McPherson, but so that becomes a bit of a little speed track as well, that we've lowered the speed limit out of 40 kilometers as well in the village to try and address that. And, but I think the concern is speeding still. And the, the Rockwell Drive and Lilawatt intersections there with the heavier, heavier vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, worship. Yes, I think my issue is a little bit bigger than, I agree with all, everything that's been said, but perhaps the big picture is to try to get the federal government more in line when it comes to repeat criminals that the RCMP are sometimes resting two or three times a day. That would go a long way to help solve it. Another thing is the RCMP, have they been brought up to date on all the equipment that they actually need? We don't want another MATHOP to ever happen again in this country. And I know in the hands of politicians, sometimes things lag behind, and that's the question. I would like to see whether or not your divisions have been brought up to date and what you need to do your job. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got, when I, when I, when I first got your questions here, I've had them now for a number of weeks, and I'll be honest, I have a hard time answering some of these questions. I think that we are very fortunate to where we are. I think that the issues that we have here don't compare to a lot of other municipalities, and that's something that we can be very thankful from, for. What, and, and I just want to pay my respect to what the RCMP does. From the RCMP member to be at a mundane task such as at a council meeting, to all of a sudden have to be at a life or death ditch situation within minutes, takes a special person to be able to transform into that other, that other person. It, it has to be an extremely difficult part of being an RCMP member. And my highest of respect goes out for, for the RCMP members that do that. I know we've had a few incidences that when the RCMP have to attend quite quickly, your detachment is fairly close, that this, the speed from what I have seen is, is appears to be reasonable. And again, I really want to just thank you for, for your service that you provide here. But one thing I would actually like to compliment you on too, and something which I think is important to keep up, and that's just your presence on the beach, especially when the sun comes out and when we get the crowds. I think it's real important that we keep this as a family place to come, instead of a place for partygoers. So again, just the presence of the vehicles, I think is, is, is very important to me.
Thank you.
So I'll let you read your next question.
Yes, thank you, worship. Question two, what does your local RCMP do well?
Start with Counselor Vidal again.
Thank you, Mayor Wood, through you to the inspector. I echo Mayor Ed's comments on seasonal policing patrols. I think just to have your members have a presence there on the beach, you know, we do know that there probably is some liquor consumption, but from what I understand from Sergeant Sergeant, it has not been a big, huge issue down on the beach, so I certainly appreciate that. Another thing that I think you do do very well is providing council with regular updates. And I believe they're sent out every month, every month. And council has an opportunity then to review some stats, so I'll speak for myself, but I certainly do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fazio?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. I think at the end of all these questions, the one one word that always comes out is communication, and I think you'll agree, that's very important, and we do have good communication with our local detachment and our sergeants. As Counselor Vidal says, we have the monthly stats every month, they're given to council for their review. The interest in our community and events is tremendous. They're always there when we need you. And everything depends on resources. You know, people still got this thing in their head that the policeman's going to be on that corner 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That's not going to happen. So, you know, you're going to, you're going to be, you're going to be a little bit sensible on how small detachment has to cover such a geographical area, which is so large, as we pointed out to the minister the, the last year, that you have to cover with a small detachment that we have is tremendously, the, the work that you do. So thank you for your communications, your interest in our community, and just keep up what you're doing. I think you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, worship. The RCMP has always been there when we've needed them. On July the 1st, when they have shown up with their paddy wagon, I think that was really enough to keep everybody in check. There was a year when we had a few people that had to attend inside of it. That never happened again. I really appreciate the support that you've given us. Thank you.
Thank you. So what does your local RCMP do well? Again, all these questions were difficult ones to answer, because I have so many different things that, that I could actually say. But within a month of me being, becoming mayor, especially as a new mayor into the community, the Staff Sergeant and Lead Inspector Darren, and I can't recall his last name, made a point of coming and having some communication with the mayor, and I thought that was, that was very helpful. And the, one of the items that I liked and thought was the most important part was they actually brought to me not a whole list of concerns, they brought to me one of their own concerns, and that was the new provincial, the, the drug, the, the rules all around the use of drugs. And I think in a community like that, like us, what we want to present here is again, a family community. So when you have someone that's shooting drugs or smoking something right up next to a family is something that I think means dearly to all of us. So for them to bring that forward, again, I thought that was extremely helpful. And even if they didn't think, I, I didn't hear it, they actually even went and had meetings with the senior staff to make sure that the senior staff are, so that it doesn't, it didn't fall through the loops. So I, I think that that communication part, as Counselor Fazio said, communication, communication, communication. I, I think it's working, working well here. And again, we get our monthly reports back, and again, those are, those are very helpful.
Thank you.
Your next question then, please.
Yeah, so what could your local RCMP do, RCMP do better?
Counselor, Counselor Vidal, can I start with you then?
Thank you, Mayor Wood, and through you to Inspector. Although you may not have a lot of influence in, in this, I certainly would like to see the seasonal policing program reinstated, and the two years that we did have it, it was a tremendous success, and I understand that, you know, with issues with staffing and but if you have any influence with the powers that be, we would certainly appreciate having that brought back. And one other thing and is more, more of a question related to what lake patrols, there certainly has been an increase in the number of boaters that are out on the lake, and I'm wondering how often or, or is it regularly that you get out on the boat and do patrols, or is it only when requested to do so?
That's Lake Patrol, because, good question. Not taking anything away from Sergeant Mike Sergeant, he might be the best person to answer that question. Having said that, I think this is a case where, as we indicated in the past, and this is, it goes back to a lot of the communication piece. So, so you guys talk about communication, and I when it's a third council that I've been at, and I, and I, it sort of seemed like there's almost a need for me to come before council to talk about how does your RCMP local attachment work? Like, like what is the, like, like Counselor Fazio said, so that officer over there, how do we get 15 officers at the ICS detachment? You know what I mean? So it's, it's kind of a little bit of, if you don't understand that part of it, then you can't understand the expectations, right? Because they, they link to each other. So when you talk about patrols and seasonal policing, yes, they are, those programs are available, but again, where's the funding formula that goes with it? And there's no funny formula that goes with it, then there is no service of it, right? So, and I think that's the big piece of it. So to say that there's never any patrols, well, no, how, again, I think there should be some patrols. Again, I think it's a matter of then to what extent and to how the frequency, right? So how many do we have? Can we get there only for the long weekends? You know, again, can we go for every weekend? Probably not, not without seasonal pleasing team, right? So and I understand that the boat in ICS is a, is a decent boat, but it's also meant for a fair weather type of boating and not sort of when the, when the waves really kick up, right? So search a rescue, then do that part for us. But just very quickly, I believe 15, 15 officers are out of the ICS detachment, which patrol, which does the police service out of, out of Harrison Springs. I believe 50% of that is provincial resources, and the other 50% is paid by the sheriff Kent. So seven and eight, I think is actually how it balances out, but still, but that being said, so nonetheless, I guess one, the, the thing I'm trying to point out is although we have a, what we call a blended response strategy in the sense we don't determine whether you're provincial or what you're municipal, but nonetheless, that gets a little bit more complicated if all of a sudden district can recognizes, a lot of times their officers would be pulled out of district Kent pull out ICS to do provincial work. And this is where then I started hearing about is why my officer's leaving Gagazi. Well, because we're blending detachment. Well, okay, that's great, but hate to say it, when there's issues up and so, so far, it's not my issues. My task, paying dollars, I'm paying for these officers to be in within my community, right? So that's the kind of stuff that kind of goes around sometimes that we are usually able to mitigate and discuss and come to an understanding that even if I, when I see it's below resources, Chilliwack supports it, because it was, we're a regional detachment, and that's nicely by the regional model. However, it's also Chilliwack members that is coming out to support, you know, the, the provincial areas sometimes, right? So yeah, so anyway, it's one of the, by the, having said that, it's something, it'll be, I love the opportunity, probably redo another session to discuss that. And I think that's a piece that's now missing to, if you understand, you only have seven officers, right? That provides 24-hour coverage, then technically speaking, how do you get boat patrols out of seven officers when charges, annual leave, holiday, you know, holiday, sick leave courses, you might only have four is working? Kind of stuff, but rotating in a given time? It's a closed session, right? Yeah. So.
Thank you. Thank you for that, and I certainly would appreciate a little bit more in-depth information on how that funding works and, and that allocation. So I would look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Fazio, did you?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. From my perspective, I always found out the visit, especially in the, in the seasons, months of May to September, visibility is very important in the community, especially with the amount of visitors that we receive here. There was some discussion, I know from Sergeant Sergeant, that if it was possible, again, every, if it's possible depending on resources, that, and we do get them on the beach now and again, but if, if they could be increased, would be the foot patrols. They work out very well when they're patrolling along the promenade there on their foot patrols, and also it's a, it's a backup for our our bylaw enforcement officers as well, if they have any concerns in regards to whether it's liquor or smoking, whatever, whatever the case may be out there. I know in the last couple of years, I've had a couple of incidents on the beach there where the police were, were, were around and it became very helpful for the bylaw officers to, to have them on hand. And I know there is a communication between the bylaw officer and the RCMP during the seasons. There was also, wasn't last year, maybe the year before, they did use our trailer at the boat launch as an office temporarily, and I think Mike was thinking of them maybe coming to the village and maybe enlarge on that and maybe use it more during the summer months, instead of them having to keep taking off. I mean, they can park their vehicles there, they can, they can do their foot patrols, and if they, and also they can get out some handy information to the boaters as well in that area, but as I say, whether that's possible, I don't know, but I think a discussion with the, our manag, management could let you know if that is still feasible. I believe it's air-conditioned. So it's, it's a good location. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you answered the next three questions. They all cross over to each other there. Counselor Jackson?
Thank you, worship. I think all the questions that I had have already been asked.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. What can the local RCMP do better? Oh, I would actually ask you the same question. So what can we do to help you do your jobs better?
Oh, I love a question with a question. No, hey, I, I, a lot of things flow in my head. I think we just hit on this, but you're talking, I did bring it up at the stakeholders meetings, the public engagement meeting. So as you know, you mentioned the, Sir Counselor Vidal, you mentioned the seasonal pleasing team that they came in here, and I believe that was a one or two-year special project with attached funding supportive. And going back to what, what we're discussing, the seasonally theme is not here this year, because I understand there is no funding for it. So that's kind of the, the linkage there, I guess I can put it pretty quickly. Harrison Hall Springs is the only community with elected council that we don't have a specific municipal contract with, right? So in other words, the placing you receive is attached to the provincial allocation of, of members that are just allocated to the ICS detachment. So while that might have worked, perhaps when this community was 500 people, 800 people, there's no magical formula, but eventually, as the community grows larger and larger, you need, there's going to be more and more problems. It's kind of how these go as a community goes larger and larger, right? So, so I do invite council for consideration sometime, when you're ready to think about municipal contracts, then you start to get into specific officers that focuses on specific issues within this community. Like I said, right now, you share the officers, technically speaking, with all the provincial allocation. So if we have a, we have an issue up the Stahelis, those officers go to Stahelis. We have a car accident on number seven highway, those cars is going number seven highway. Those are provincial resources that's allocated to the whole geographical area. No, different, the wildfires, if the wildfires, I assume that are hopefully better since the rains come last couple of days, but should they be deployed, that's where the provincial resources are going to. So then it doesn't leave anything with much place anybody else, right? And that's essentially really fundamentally about it. And when I look at the, of course, the biggest city, be Chilliwack in the Upper Fraser Valley Regional Detachment area, I could tell you that there's a total of 148 officers posted at Chilliwack. 139 of them are paid for by the city of Chilliwack. Only nine belongs to the province. So therefore, it's a municipal, really it's a municipal detachment, right? It's a municipal office, so because the city, the residents of the city of Chilliwack pays for that. And that's why we started getting to these, as, as Counselor Fazio's heard in the last few days about the BC Highway Patrol issue, the arguments over that, and this is a classic example, it's a provincial unit with a provincial mandate versus municipalities, who doesn't want to pay for that provincial mandate beyond the, on the number one highways, right? But that's another whole other issue, but that being said, that's where the complexity of the business of policing is starting to play here, right? So you start to see the, the issues there. So anyway, I, I get, I only thought about there, I know another example of seasonal is called the slate. Called the slate, as, as you know, in, in, in Chilliwack area, they entered to a municipal contract through the city of Chilliwack, actually, because the department itself are not, I guess, perhaps withstanding to be recognized as a municipality, so therefore they cannot purchase the, I, I, say, an officer services through municipal contract by themselves. So they actually intertwine kind of with the city of Chilliwack, so they send the money to the city of Chilliwack, Chilliwack buys the member, so to speak. But that member is then allocated towards the call to say for seasonal policing. So again, we take, and, and, and that situation for, as a service delivery provider, we basically ask them what they wanted. In their case, they simply said, we just wanted for the summer months, really from May till, to August, kind of stuff, that's it, three, four months, that's all we want, right? So no problem. We took one officer, which therefore is supposedly provides you 12-month service, divide it by four, then we'll give you four hours or three months, or in this case, three officers for four months. Equals 12 again, right? So they get three officers for, for four months of the year, and the rest of time, they don't get any officers, as per the norm. They don't have an enhanced piece. So you start getting to, it's between the, what we call a core policing, which basically goes back to what you guys are saying. If somebody calls 911 here today, cops will show up. That's part of what we need to do, right? For whatever the, the cost of services. When you start asking for more presence, that's where the balance is between what we can deliver. And then, of course, again, outside of the, the weekend, so maybe so getting to the areas of enhanced policing. So in other words, there's another example I give you, all officers here are expected to spend some time in schools, but that's not going to detract. If you were to say to me, let's buy one officer and put their school days on, that's all I want that person to do. Then, yes, you're going to have great presence at the school, because you have one officer, that's all he does, right? And that's what happens as municipalities grow larger and larger, they start to recognize the need, and then what do we probably balance that need versus raising taxes to pay for that need, right? Pay for that service. So I'm just throwing it out there, because it's like, this is the only council we have that we don't have a municipal contract with.
Thanks for explaining that.
Yeah, so, so how can you help me? That's how you can help.
Hey, you're my need.
I'm just, I'm just trying to say that, hey, at the end of the day, guys, if you guys want this stuff, if you want that level of service, you want that presence to be up and down the, the streets every single day, that comes with that cost, right? You, you, if you pay for that cost, then absolutely, we're, we're bound to deliver it. We're a service provider. But if you don't pay for that cost, then technically speaking, the same could be asked of us by, like, hey, again, I use the Stahelis or, up at Harrison Mills, and in any of these communities in the region, says we do want police presence. We do want people to walk around. Well, I can send people to walk around, or I can send officers to report your break and enter, right? We only have several members working, so. Right? We only have several members working, so what would you like? And this is what I'm faced with, right? So then, because I get it's only so much I could draw from, right? So.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. So what are the one or two concrete actions your local RCMP can take in the next year that will make a positive difference in the community? I think Counselor Fazio mentioned about the trailer facility, I would be one, seasonal policing.
Thank you. The other counselors have anything else? No, okay. Go ahead. Did you have something, Counselor? Just if you had something to add to the trailer part. Well, we're we're almost through four.
Yeah, we we just covered number four, yes. Question number four.
Let's skip to, let's go to five. Item five, sure.
So is there anything else you'd like to see that we can undertake to make a positive difference? I I and I understand some of these questions really kind of run into each other, right? Like if you answer number one, you suddenly get to number four and five kind of stuff. So so if there's nothing else, I can jump to number five.
Did you?
Yeah, go ahead. Just to exactly what I brought up with the regional district, but it's it would be beneficial, I think, if at some point, I know the open house that you had, it was a great success. And that's to undertake a meeting with the business community and just let them know what you can do for them. But what can they do for you to make their their businesses more secure? Some do have cameras and everything, not all of them do. I know when you did the program, what Mike did for the condos, it was it was quite successful because they were getting seven break-ins in their underground garages. That they put a program together to help them out on that. So I think that would be beneficial. And the accommodation section, that's the one where I believe there's quite a a substantial amount of car break-ins in their parking lots. So I think that's another area where communication with the RCMP and the management of the of the of the accommodations would be helpful to say, what do you have here that can help us? If you don't have it, I think we think you should put this in to benefit your your patrons to make their make their vehicles more safer than what they are, because that's one of the largest complaints, I believe, is 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 break-ins in the accommodation areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Okay, so what is one, I think, one thing that your RCMP and your organization can work on together?
Go ahead, Counselor Fazio.
Exactly what he just brought up three minutes ago. Nino. Lobbying, I think is important. We did this at UBCM last year to lobby for the RCMP in regards to trying to get more police officers into the attachments and also the the money side of it to help you to retain and get more policemen as well. So that's one of the areas I think that we can work together. And it's important, I think, if you have any, anything that would be beneficial to us as the people they're going to be lobbying for you, that we receive it prior to UBCM in September. So we have a bit of ammunition with this. Use the word ammunition.
No, no. Thank you for bringing that up. And and I and I certainly we we definitely always welcome any, I guess, efforts or initiatives to to advocate for more officers at our detachment in particular. So but the only thing, one thing I just want to reinforce again, for just one education purposes side of things is that generally speaking, what happens is the RCMP, internally within the RCMP, we advocate to our headquarters, you know, say how many offices we need on the provincial side. And and the reasons why, kind of a short rationale as to why we need these officers. I can tell you in the years passed, until I think about a year ago, almost for fifteen years, there was no no dishes on the provincial side. While the municipalities keep adding officers, like the city show, like I mentioned, the provincial side stays still, right? Now, when officers allocated by the province, should they prove X number of positions? They don't dictate to those to the RCP where those positions go. Because from headquarters, they also submit a number of officers. Here's what the officers, here's our asks, if you will. And and here's my priority where they will go. So then, that when when you, you know, lobby the UBCM, when you say to the province, all the province usually to put all responses, we we give the money to the RCPs up there, it's going to be allocated accordingly. That's how it kind of works, right? So then what happens is the RCP as a whole then starts to, I say, prioritize, and we do have detachments up north, as short. Or the best one I always give in Lower Mainland is university detachment. University detachment is a unique, unique situation where they are attachment, obviously, right in the city, in the city Vancouver on all four sides, right? So when they ask for more officers, they're unique, they're different. This is a subject. I mean, we talk about community exploding here. I mean, this is a community that probably has fifty thousand people here today. Comes up with all the faculty students and nighttime drops on top with nothing, right? So truly unique on a day-to-day basis, of course, your school seasons, what have you. But that's what you can say, but I can show the lower mainland, when they ask for officers, they tend to get some because there's going to be crimes committed there. And of course, boom, they're in the city Vancouver, they're gone, right? So but we do advocate for it, and we appreciate the, you guys advocating for it. I'm just saying, in in circumstances like this, it's not specific. So it's not, I don't know how to say, when the province has, we add more numbers, it may may not get to Chilllock or Agassi or Hope. So that's where the old Boston Bar even technically speaking, right? So that's why I said the control is not quite as you know, you don't have quite the control over it.
That's very helpful, very helpful information.
Yeah. If nothing else, I'll move on to six. Do you have any advice on us on how to better communicate with people in the community, both to get their messages out, but also to listen to the concerns?
Counselor Vidal.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Another suggestion that was brought up at the stakeholders meeting was there are numerous Facebook bulletin boards here in the village and and also our own Village of Harrison Hot Springs Facebook page. And I know that those are viewed a lot by our by our residents. So my suggestion would be to perhaps consider using those social medias in order to to get your message out. Thank you.
Thank you. The only comment that I would make on it is, you know, I'm an individual that's not on Facebook. So I I don't hear all of the stuff that's on Facebook, and I know I'm not the only one that's not on Facebook. So how do you get to the people that's not on Facebook? I can't really answer that question. I mean, back to the traditional ways of what we had before. But, you know, I I think that's important. Sometimes it seems to be, people think that, well, it's on Facebook, everyone knows. Well, we don't. So that would be my only suggestion on that.
Okay, thank you. And finally, is there anything else you would like us to consider as we proceed with our strategic planning to guide the detachment for the years ahead? It's kind of a fancy way of asking anything else to add.
I I I thought something for you. The issue with Surrey, now I'm not going to ask you specifically with Surrey, but I mean, it all has to do with whether and when, you know, you decide that you go to a private police versus the RCMP. You know, I I'm a strong believer that no one force should have special large powers. So, you know, there is significant benefits to, you know, having the community police. But I can also see the 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 benefit, especially for smaller communities of where the RCMP can can work so much better. Obviously, if we had our own police force here, I I don't see it being very practical, especially in some of the smaller communities. So, you know, it's it's, I think the RCMP seems to be growing. I was part of the project with your new E-division building in South Surrey. So I understand the number of RCMP members that there are working behind the scenes, that no one has any idea what's happening back there and the research that, I mean, the investigate is again, and it's just a tremendous amount of RCMP and obviously, that that's vital, how that works with the private or the sort of private, but the local police forces, you know, I I can see that that'd be interesting, you know, how that crossover of information comes. I guess as we, as our social media changes, the communication changes more and more. It's easier for you guys to share information back and forth because you have to share the information. But I I I think it's important that we have a share, you know, a balance of of both RCMP and and local police. And I know it's a struggle for for both forces. And I just wish that the members could deal with the with what Surrey is dealing with.
That's right.
Thank you. No further. Go ahead, Counselor Fazio.
Thank you. Mayor Wood. I would suggest as you will, as you intend on the Fraser Valley Regional District, are doing a
I didn't understand.
Oh, go away. A regional growth strategy. So to twenty fifty, and within that regional growth strategy, it does give a very large picture of transportation, health, management, growth in the region. And I think it's very important for the police force to 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 have so work closely with the regional district as they move forward with that, because it's a great document. It outlines everything that may happen. I'll say it's going to happen exactly as written, but it 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 looks to the future, which you're talking about strategic planning. And I think that's an area where one of your staff would be of be of great value to them to get involved with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Agree with that a hundred percent.
Counselor Vidal.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Just a bit of a final comment on communication. I know it's the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary this year of the RCMP. And perhaps communicating events in the area to celebrate that would be, certainly would be beneficial. Thank you.
Good. Just, did you, did you have anything you would like to close with, or are we?
No, I'd also say thank you very much for the opportunity to come before you, your worship and counselors. It is our CP one fifty this year. No, it's okay. And I don't know if there's any specific plans in Agassi outside the normal planning or engagement that we have already planned, such as candidate, that kind of stuff. I know the RCMP ride is coming in June, this month, June twenty ninth, I want to say, at Chilllock. That's where they're coming to. They're actually doing a tour. I think they're only stopping, I want to say, two to three spots in Lower Mainland, I think Surrey, Burnaby, and ourselves in the Upper Fraser Valley. So then they're going to Callops and to interior. So but that being said, I think that's the last one. We did have the RCP ball out here. That was part of our Western RCB one fifty celebration, although it wasn't open to the public, but nonetheless, it was one of the things we did. And I said we stayed the open house on on Saturday in Chilllock office. So there might be something we might plan for for kind of a open house down here. I know Sergeant, my sergeant usually does something. I just don't know to what extent he's got planned as to how big he wants to make it be, make make it so. But obviously, thank you very much and for recognizing the RCP one fifty this year.
Perhaps if yourself or Sergeant Sergeant could pass on that information to staff about the musical ride in Chillowack, and they could see that, you know, it went out through our communication channels to residents. I know it's a it's a big, big draw, and I'll certainly be attending. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, well, let's make sure we said something over, but June twenty ninth at the Chill like Heritage Center, and I believe the two shows, seven and nine P M, and the seven there, I heard is sold out already. So there might only be the nine P M show that's still left. But yeah, it has, I'll be honest, a little bit of a little bit of frustration organizing this because, again, it's kind of funny, although it's RCP ride, we have nothing to do with the RCMP at the local detachment. So therefore, it become a three-way coordination thing, and a lot of us talking to them, and then the organizers that is. And we're trying to talk to the organizers a little bit, and but we're not, we're not getting a lot of free flowing information here. So but anyway, all I know is twenty eighth, sorry, June twenty ninth, you can just Google it, it's a Churchill, let's chill like fair, that's hosting it. And tickets are online, like they're just so long. I don't have any free tickets to give you. I'll be honest, I don't have one myself. I don't know how I'm going to get in there to wear my uniform. But but yeah, so unfortunately, I would like to be able to pass them out if I could.
Great. Thank you for coming here today. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Excuse me. Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Mr. Bruce Blackwell, BA Blackwell and Associates regarding the urban forest master plan here to speak on it.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to you, counsel. I don't have a clicker to move slides. So I'm just gonna just let you know. Okay. I'm here with my colleague Judith Cowan, who was largely responsible for this project under our joint supervision. We came to you well over a year ago and spoke with counsel about what we intended to do and how to do it. We've had several public meetings pre-writing the plan and post-writing the plan. So we have lots of engagement with the community. And we work towards coming to a plan that we think for the size of the community that you can handle. There's there's many, many, many things that you could do, and there's lots of money that you could spend here. But recognizing the capacity of the community, what are the most important things that you should do going forward? And I think we've we fit the mark on that. This plan was submitted to staff in December. We received comments from staff in February. We responded to those comments and made adjustments to the to the plan. And and I'm bringing you what is, I believe, a final plan in terms of recommendations and and the content to the plan. And I'm not sure whether any of you have actually seen it or not at this point. But staff has a copy and you could you could request that if you haven't seen it. And there are, oh, you've all got it. I can see it. Okay, so the goals and objectives of this project were to provide direction for the village to manage its urban forest cover. You have a diversity forest cover, both forest cover from crown land that surrounds the community and your own urban street trees that are jointly managed between private landowners yourselves as as the village. The goal of this plan is to provide direction on to improve and preserve and protect the existing trees. We'll have some comments on that. And to support establishment of new tree plantings in the urban area. So that's that's the goal. And and the project was supposed to be linked to the O C P and the goals of the O C P. And and we actually have been in contact with a consultant that's working on the 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 new O C P, asking some some questions and directions. And the idea is that it informs policy changes. Particularly is it results to with results to preserving and protecting trees in the community and enhancing new plantings. So many communities are undertaking urban forest management plans all over North America, particularly with the concept of the benefits of trees, which are sequestering carbon, providing shade, shade, being an amenity to citizens. It's it's been shown quite clearly in the literature that trees provide a psychological benefit. And developing an urban forest that's resistant to disease, climate, and isn't going to create hazards into the future. So that that was largely the intent of what we set out to 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 talk about. Initially, as I said, we got council feedback. The key areas of council feedback were addressing tree risk management, management of street trees, tree health and resilience. Uh addressing tree risk management, management of street trees, uh tree health and resilience. And looking at um starting a tree inventory to quantify what you actually have or don't have. We, we got a lot of public feedback. We, as I said, we had a a workshop, a public open house. Uh we had commentary from a number of citizens. Uh comments, the highlight comments were a lack of tree replacements. Uh tree removal and tree protection. There was areas of the village that people didn't feel had seen adequate. Tree protection and there were tree removals. Uh also wildfire hazard was a big concern. Um and and you do have a community wildfire protection plan which we completed that does have a lot of recommendations in it. As it relates to protecting the community from wildfire and your fire chief, I believe, is is actively engaged in that. Uh we also spoke to, the public also spoke to natural area protection, so protecting the natural areas around the community. We also went out to the business community and asked for their input. Uh they're concerned about tourism. Aesthetic values were very high on their list of items. They also were commented on tree risk. Um they commented on crown land within the boundaries of the village. There is a significant component of. Crown land that isn't being managed right now. It's the responsibility ability of the province or uh the Fraser Valley Regional District. It does. Uh potentially have hazards associated whether whether the wildfire hazard, whether their tree risk hazards. But they're important to business function in the community in terms of offering areas for people to visit when they come here. Um there there were comments about uh whether qualified professionals were involved in performing tree works in the community. So those, those are the highlights. There were others and they're documented in the report. And I'm not gonna take long. I've only got thirteen slides. Purpose of this was to open it up to questions, comments and and clarification. So. Probably the number one concern in terms of visiting the village was there's no re- routine hazard assessment. Um by a qualified uh tree risk assessor. You have lots of forest cover here. You have hazard trees that have developed through forest health conditions, public trails. And if one of those trees were to fail, hit an individual, hit a car. I mean, without some form of tree risk assessment in those high use areas. The village is potentially a has a liability. Most municipalities that we're associated with. Have moved to some form of tree risk assessment periodically. So for example, Whistler, all of their valley trail is assessed every two years. Track trees that are assessed as a high risk are removed, trees that have flaws that potentially could fail in the future are looked for monitoring. Uh we're recommending probably the number one recommendation is that with the number of visitors that you have here during the tourism season that you. Uh adopt some form of tree risk assessment. Um and that doesn't have to be annual, but it should be consistent. It should be done. In a regu- on a regular basis. Uh we're recommending that you use the track standard, which is the um A S I standard, the Arboretal Culture Society's. Uh approach to tree risk assessment. Aging trees need inventory and regular monitoring. So you have a lot of deciduous cottonwood type trees. Those trees, as they get older, the risk of failure gets higher, branch failure, stem failure. Um and then it, we're talking about trees that are along popular trails or even roadways, the green belt. Uh along the wetland here, there are a number of trees that are right next to road across the street from houses, cars, et cetera. Those trees. Potentially pose a significant risk. And as we've seen these droughts over the last few years, particularly last fall and what we're seeing this year. Many trees are stressed. There's higher levels of mortality. Those trees all uh need to be focused on in terms of watching them as as hazard trees. Second thing that was identified is tree preservation and protection. There has been a fair bit of construction. Uh around the community and the construction sites that we visited or new development that we visited. Uh historic trees in the inventory here were not being adequately protected. Um in the sense that ideally you have an enforceable bylaw and you have an enforcement process. That during construction phases and development, that existing trees in the community are protected from damage from construction. And will survive the construction and still flourish into the future. So you can see this example picture up above. Those trees weren't affected by construction, but they were affected by somebody brutally pruning them. Um whether that was the business owner for viewscapes or whatever, you see also on the right that there is a, one of the oaks, you have some very large. And um I would call them heritage oaks that are planted around the hotel. Um this particular example, you can see that the roots have been disturbed all the way around the base of the tree. And that is gonna lead either to tree stress or tree failure into the future. Those types of trees. That are hundreds of years old that were originally planted here need a focus of protection because I don't think anybody wants to see those loss. By being careless and that tree could have been protected on that construction site. So there needs to be some uh some bylaw work. And some enforcement work in the but, no one needs to penalize those who don't protect these streets. And that again. Is a common standard in municipalities, more and more of the protection levels, the fountains, et cetera, are going up and up. So that particularly around construction sites or people who wanna create views, that's often another reason trees are damaged. Um are better protected because they take so long to 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 reproduce, regrow. And they contribute so much value to the the community. So uh that was concern number two. Okay, malfunction. Can you move to the next slide, please? Sorry, this isn't working now. Um the other thing is caring uh for the current and future urban forest. All those blue dots uh are actually trees that we inventoried in the community that. Trees that are the responsibility of the village. Uh there's lots of trees that are the responsibility of private owners. And the blocks of green space have a diversity of ownership uh from the crown, the Fraser Valley Regional District and yourselves. Um ideally, uh this whole population of trees is aging. There's disturbance going on on those natural parcels. There's disturbance going on to the. Street tree population, particularly drought uh and potentially wind stress and other things. So ultimately uh replacing those trees and managing those, those areas become important. Replacements should be done with the proper species selection in mind. Uh I can tell you that Vancouver. Has a lot of very popular uh cherries that form the cherry blossom um. Festival there, but those trees were poorly selected. They only lived for thirty five years. They have uh. Branch crown problems where you get failures. They do damage the sidewalks, all those kind of things. They're not really suitable for the urban forest in Vancouver. And yet there's a society there that's now trying to protect them. And they're a very large burden in terms of management, maintenance and cost. So ideally, your tree replacement focus should be the right tree in the right place. And making sure it's the right species selection, um and that it's not gonna lead to maintenance problems. It's not gonna lead to failures. And it's gonna provide the benefits that you're looking for. So ideally, selecting the right species in this replacement becomes a very important decision. New landscaping is inspected for quality by the developers. And they hire qualified environmental professionals, Q E Ps, to do those inspections and manage their plantings. You will assume those plantings in some cases after the development is is completed. And it's, it's really important that that those new landscapes result in uh the same kind of quality development that you wanna focus on, on um municipal land. So having guidance around species, all those kind of things becomes very important. I have to commend you that driving in, there were some maples. I'm not sure if they're the developer's responsibility still or the city's or the village's responsibility, but they were all bagged and being watered. On the, on the boulevard. I thought that was tremendous where I live in Northan. We've got some new plantings on a park that I live next to and they're all dying because the drought has been so bad for the last month. So good for your staff for getting on those and watering those trees quickly because we have been in a very difficult tree window here. The last month and a half and. You know, honestly, I don't think that the rain that we had to date and the rain that's forecasted over the next couple of weeks is gonna satisfy what tree needs over, are this summer. And so. Watering trees is gonna be important and I think, I'm sure you've heard that the the hazard of wildfire is uh very difficult right now and I don't see it decreasing. So. All of these things are important and timely to think about. Um obviously, we've all seen the effects of change in climate in terms of how it's affected British Columbia. And we're seeing it right now. Towns being evacuated in the northeast, uh highway being closed on the island. Uh I, in my twenty year career. Looking at it fires since two thousand and three, um I think we've seen a fifteen percent change. In the period of low relative humidities, higher temperatures, and it seems to be getting worse. So the potential for floods, the potential for fire and the impacts on what we're trying to manage are all changing. And so we need to adapt and we need to be thinking about these things in our, in our programs. And unmanaged resource land. Like some of the parcels you have right next to the village need to be steward at a higher standard. So. We're recommending that you cooperate with the F V R D and the province to achieving some of these forest health goals. Uh reducing wildfire hazards. There were several areas in those parcels that were identified in the Community Wildfire Protection Plan for treatment. I don't believe that's happened. But those areas pose a risk to the community and they need a higher standard of management. So. A key recommendation is more cooperation with them in looking at those parcels that you don't have full jurisdiction over yet. They're backing on to many residents and uh parts of the community. Internal capacity, building internal capacity. So ultimately, within the forthcoming O C P update. There's gonna be recommendations around supporting the protection establishment and enhancement of the urban forest. Um I think. Right now, the the staff complement probably has as much as it can handle, given the resources that are available to them. So we're recommending that you do more cooperative pooling with the F V R D. And and other communities and potentially try to jointly retain a Q P that can do the assessments, whether they're fire smart. Fuel treatments or tree risk assessments. I think as a small municipality, trying to ramp up all of these programs on your own may. Maybe difficult. I I'm not saying it can't be done, but I'm saying it may be better to create a cooperative working group where resources are shared for. Within the smaller municipalities and ultimately um create an interdepartmental working group of selected staff and representatives. From F V R D, the the province and yourselves to try to work towards a solution to managing some of these. Both crown land parcels and your own municipal parcels. Tree management preservation by law number ten fifteen. It requires homeowners to replace trees that have been. Removed as a condition of the tree management permit. Ideally, it needs to include some tree protection guidelines and specifications around those removals. And it also requires the implementation of penalties for for excess pruning or damage to trees on private property. Um all over the lower mainland, we're seeing more and more people remove trees illegally, mostly because they want. Uh um a view. Um some want more sunlight. Um but again, these trees are now set to the community. We need to protect them and we need the community to understand why they need to be protected. So. Uh it's not just enforcement, it's education as well, but it seems that there is. Some misunderstanding about why these trees provide some benefits to the community. Um and and we're, we're hoping that you can. Improve that communication, improve the standards of protection, particularly on private land. Subdivision servicing by law number five seventy eight. Um it requires replacement of trees as a condition of any tree cutting. So if you cut a tree, you have to replace that tree. Uh there's implementation of maintenance securities for tree replacement to aid in successful establishment. And. It provides incentives to land developers for retaining mature trees by reducing, reducing permit trees or uh replacement requires. These, this is a good bylaw. And it needs to be enforced. It's important. It seems that there has been a lot of planting that has been associated with development. And as I said, whether those trees I saw today were. Were the community trees or where they were recent development trees, they were what they were. Yeah, they they were well, well managed, but. The trees that have been planted recently seem to have been well managed through through this bylaw. They've been planted, looked after. Until they're assumed by the the village and the village seems to be looking after them. And and that needs to continue and that's an important part of why this bylaws in place. And that can also be aided through enforcement. Um again, a recommendation for tree management for public safety. Ideally, you need to identify where you want to do these risk assessments. You need to schedule routine risk assessments for priority errors. To be conducted by a qualified risk assessor. And you need to create an assessment and management guideline, guideline. So there is a standard. But what standard you wanna accept is in your hands and that's up to the village to think about what standard and what frequency. You can both uh implement with the, with the resources you have with the the available budget. But you need to start doing something on a consistent basis. And that can be, like I said, it can be one year, two year, three year. But you need a program in place, particularly in these areas where you've got lots of people and trees that could fail. And through the first survey, you're gonna understand where some of these really hazardous areas are. So you might wanna think about a very broad survey across the community. Benchmark everything and then decide on the frequency of of um of of hazard assessment into the future. Climate change, I think um the key areas to target, uh we 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 did recommend follow-up fuel management. From the twenty seventeen Community Wildfire Protection Plan. That was the East Sector North Treatment Unit, the Miami Greenway. West Treatment Unit and the Miami Greenway East Treatment Unit. To our knowledge, I don't think any work's been followed up since twenty seventeen on those units. But they were identified as high fire hazards. Um again, the other thing is uh adopt a preferred tree list. To promote genus and species in these areas that uh have been disturbed. So those are two key recommendations in terms of of maintaining forest resilience. So that's all I'm gonna say today. There's a lot more material in the actual plan in itself. Um as I said, we've tried to incorporate the comments of of the community and uh we enjoyed working on the project and I. Open the Florida comments in question and I may defer some of those to Judith if I feel that she's smarter than I, which she is most of the time.
Thank you. Counselor, is Counselor first here?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Um my first question is, this relates to last year's fire season. That. And this was a series that was on television, that the new subdivisions in areas. Where there are a lot of trees trying to create a larger buffer zone, so the trees are not so close to your homes. In relation to fire hazard. So I'm not sure how that fits in with, with when people say, well, we don't. We we don't want so many trees in a subdivision because of it's a fire hazard.
So first, i- it's a good point. You don't, but what what we typically follow are fire smart guidelines. So we think usually in subdivisions, the ten meters. Around the house, so that's thirty feet around the home. Ideally, we don't want a lot of coniferous trees. And we don't particularly want cedar hedging. We don't want U hedging. Um and we don't want juniper. Those species are very volatile. They have a lot of resins. And uh extractives that are very flammable. If you've ever seen a cedar hedge go up, uh it'll, it'll, it's a conduit for moving fire across the property. It'll start a fence on fire. So those particular trees or conifer trees in general, I would suggest are a fire hazard. However. Many, much of the planting that's been done here are deciduous trees. Deciduous trees have high fully immersed moisture content. They typically have high crowns. And they they'll die in a fire, but they're not gonna be a conduit to moving fire through the community. So. We wanna encourage those deciduous trees on private property and we wanna manage and I'm not, I'm, this is an urban forest management plan. It's not a fire management. But you're taking advantage of this, the work we do in fire. But certainly, homes backing up to green spaces that are dominated by coniferous trees. You want defensible space. So often lots are too close or buildings are too close to those. Public land areas. That's where we need to think about creating more space, thinning, doing treatments that buy some. Defensible space for those particular homes. Certainly in any new home construction, there's no excuse to have over plantings. Of conifers, over plantings of these species that we know are flammable. But it seems no matter how hard we try. People like cedar hedges for privacy and other things. And we really gotta try and start managing that. Because those are the kinds of things that really add complications to this. If you follow the Nova Scotia Fires. Um most of those were on fairly large lots. They were on quarter section lots. And yet, because the buildings. The the structures themselves were made of wood. And yet, because the buildings, the, the structures themselves were made of wood or older, they caught on fire. If we have that defensible space, embers hit the, the home and the home is constructed of. The proper buildings m- material, they won't be as vulnerable to fire. And I think a lot of your new construction seems pretty good that way and pretty good from a, uh, um, a landscaping point of view. It'll be the older structures that'll be more vulnerable.
Thank you, worship. Uh, thank you very much for, for this report. I found it very, very interesting. I realized. That for a place like Harrison, you get into the big picture because we have the east sector except. Oh, we're going to have to come up with a specific pa- plan how to do it. We know it needs to be done. I guess the whole idea is to how, I'm not asking you to tell us how. Is the challenge that we're going to have. So what I visualize here is this report going back to council. Bylaws being updated, which I personally knew they had to be. And then set up a criteria to have a specific. Plan to move forward in the future and how to, how to attain what you have in here. And I do thank you for the report.
Thank you. I, I think you have a, what I'll call a confused problem in that. The F V R D has jurisdiction and yet that in some of that property and, and so does crown land. And I think this is what our re- recommendation is focused on, working with them to jointly. Recognize that those parcels have significant influence on the community and they need to be managed. And right now they're not being managed. So if there's one thing that comes out of this report, that's probably in terms of threats to the community. It probably is the biggest, um, the biggest reckon, the most important recommendation. And you're right, it, there does need to be. A plan for those parcels, a standalone plan. It's not something we could do as part of this work. It's not something you can do as part of a community wildfire protection plan. You need a, a joint management agreement. That who has responsibility for what in those jurisdictions? And what responsibilities are those? Whether it's fire protection, whether it's tree risk assessment, whether it's managing trails, whether it's managing use. I think you'd be in a real problem right now figuring out who has jurisdiction to close those areas if the fire hazards too high. Who is it? Is it F V R D? Is it you guys? You're probably the, the bigger stewards. You have more people here. You have the most risk. But I think it's F, F V R D's decision whether they're going to close it or not. And I don't, those aren't parks. So I would suspect that they wouldn't close it. And yet you might want it closed. That's one of the conundrums I can see. If, if there were a large blowdown patch to happen in there, who would clean it up? Who would reforest it? Those, those are big things that need to be answered and directed forward.
Counselor, did you have anything you wanted to?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Wood. Thank you for an excellent, excellent report and it appears we have a little bit of work to do. Um, I want to, and I've discussed this with you before, the beloved willow trees. Um, down on the beach, um, was that included at all in an assessment? I know you've indicated to me that they are aging. And that.
So they, they were added to the inventory. So they are part of the inventory of all the trees that we've got in the database. They fall under what I would consider to be the tree risk assessment, part of the recommendation. Some of them are sinessing and are slowly dying and will die. And there needs to be a plan to replant those trees. Probably some of them could be planted next to them, underneath them to grow up and establish before you cut down the older trees. Um, whether they're willows is another question. Um, so there's some thought by the community that needs to go into a revitalization plan as it relates to those important trees in the community.
Thank you.
The other discussion. I have just a, a few comments. So there's two of us, uh, counselors here who were not part of this. Plan. So, you know, and I guess I have lots of questions and probably look at it differently. And I understand too, it has to do with the, uh, the, uh, community, uh, wildfire protection plan too. And I think when you bring those two reports together, that my understanding that yourselves did. You know, they, especially with, with where we are here with wildfires. So it's a hot topic. So, you know, these are two really important, um, two important things. Obviously, human life. And, and then just more important than saving a tree. So, you know, the other takes more precedence in my mind over this, even though, I mean, this is, this is, this is very important. It, it sounds very rich to me for our small little community. Um, do I hope that we can get some community involvement in it and hopefully. Um, reduce these costs. Yeah, that's, that, that would be nice to see. Um, I know you've asked a few questions or you've made a few comments and, and about who owns the land. So there has been some clarification on, on who owns the land and there is a large section. Just a little over seventy-five acres, which has been confirmed that it actually is the village that owns it. So it's not just the Fraser Valley Regional District. So we can point all we want our fingers.
I, I, I agree. It's a complicated piece of land and it is multi-jurisdictional. And that's why there needs an alignment of how it's managed.
Well, we can see the example. I mean, you look back at the plan, the wildfire plan, which was done in twenty seventeen, I believe, and came to council in. Twenty nineteen. So here we are in twenty twenty-three and we haven't even touched that one. So, you know, what, what, what worries me is if we get these plans and, and nothing. It just sits. So it stalls. So I think it's really important for council, um, to work together here with staff. And be able to come up with a, a plan of how we can actually start, you know, implementing some of these, some of these plans. So it's not specific to yours, but I'm going to ask you if like, you know, just a few questions on your, here. Um, and you have under section, uh, six point one, recommendations from the twenty seventeen. I guess it's the community wildfire protection plan. And I just find it interesting, but everything under that section is either moderate or lower. So there's nothing that's, that's, that's high on there. So it would be, I would find it under the circumstances with the wildfire to understand. Where this report, where we should be concentrating sooner than later. Um, in combination of these two reports. So, um. I, I just think again that, um, again, we're making notes from twenty seventeen and. I would really like to see, instead of just having the different colors here, lower, moderate. Um, to me, it would be, it would be much more helpful if it actually said priority one, priority two. So we didn't have to guess which one is priorities, one, two or three.
So, okay, I, I'll, we, we have to be careful here because they are two separate reports.
Yes.
We did write this report trying to align with the recommendations that we had put out in twenty seventeen. In terms of implementation, yes, we could put the priorities. But you hit the nail on the head in the sense that you have limited resources, you have limited dollars. Some of those priorities are really expensive. Some of those priorities are not so expensive. So I've always believed that we have to leave it in the deh- hands of the decision makers. To look at the resource capability they have, look at the budget they have and implement what they can and try to develop that over time. If you wanted help in terms of identifying the cost, we can do that. We do often, we have in bigger municipalities, we do put. Priority cost. In smaller communities, we recognize the, the difficulty of trying to fund and prioritize. So we identify something as a higher or lower or moderate hazard. And you have to decide where your direction is within the resource capability you have.
It, it just would have been helpful because you just happened to have done our.
Because I could send you a table and I can pull in two, three, four if you want. That's not that hard to do. I think your fire chief is well aware of what the most important things are to do. He's very well versed in strengths and weaknesses. And that's the place I'd start first. And if you want further advice, I, I'd be happy to support that.
Thank you. I'd, I'd like to see that. The other section here was under seven point four. So recommendations for improvement to policies. So it's, it's interesting. We're just going through the review of our, um, uh, we have a draft O C P here. And here, um, you've got, um, intersection thirty-nine and forty. And you've actually got these as, as, as a high pri- very high priority. Um, and it's, um. I think that, uh, so it develop an O C P goals that direct an approach to how to, how development in the village is managed. Into the future with regards to protection of the urban, uh, forest. This approach includes revised development cost storage schedule that would be in support of the protection. And enhancement of the existing urban forest. Um, and you have, so I'm, I'm not going to read the other ones out here, but, but basically you've got some, um, recommendations. That the goals, um, are O C P should be amended with this vision statement. Um, I mean, I tend to agree with you. When I see an O C P, I like to see this type of stuff in the O C P. But we seem to have had it in an O C P where we're stripping everything out and putting it into separate policies or separate reports. So this report now, with this report, do you envision it to be a policy? That the O C P would be guided to, or do you think that this, our O C P vision statement should be as you stated, that it should be in?
So, so it's, it's a timely question. Your O C P consultant who is writing the O C P contacted us two weeks ago. And asked Judith a few questions. And I think we're, we would like to see this, these guiding principles in the O C P.
Thank you. That was the end of my questions. Any other questions, counselors? Okay. Well, thank you very much for, for coming and doing the presentation. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thanks for inviting me. Enjoy your day. Take care. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Sorry, um, Mayor Wood.
Yeah.
When we were scheduling the speakers, we were thinking, we gave about an hour for each speaker. So of course Ryan isn't here yet because I was thinking it wasn't going to be till about three. What I suggest is that we go to D on the agenda, which is the synthetic ice rink. Um, and, uh, talk about that now while we're waiting for Ryan.
Thank you. So that's from our old operations manager.
Thank you. Uh, okay. So I'll just reread the, um, report that I prepared for April third and then, uh, we can discuss. How we'd like to move forward. Uh, at the regular council meeting of November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, council passed the following resolution that staff people. Be directed to prepare a report on an annual operational and maintenance cost. For the ice rink at the end of the season and that expiration for options of a roof. For the rink be held in advance until such time as report is received. Discussion is the synthetic, synthetic outdoor rink known as Starlight Rink is in the resort development strategy. This rink is a community amenity that is free for use by both tourists and residents. When in use, the rink provided a pop, they're provided proved to be popular. We, uh, received positive feedback from residents who enjoyed skating there, watching their children or grandchildren skate and as a gathering. Uh, general gathering place. All capital costs were funded through the resort municipality initiative with operating costs being the responsibility of the village. The strategy to offset operating costs is to run a concession and skate rental shop alongside the rink. In its second season, which is twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, it was closed due to provincial health restrictions. The rink operate, operated from the end of October, or October twenty twenty-two through February twentieth of, uh, twenty twenty-three. Before being placed in storage. Operating costs, the concession operated for approximately five weeks. Uh, from one P M to nine P M, Monday, Thursday, Thursday to Monday, out of the sixteen weeks, the ring, the rink was in place. The rink attendant maintained the rink with the grounds and the washrooms and he managed the skate rentals, the concession and played festive music. During those five weeks, there were two hundred and three ski rentals and twenty-three hel- helmet rentals. Additional users were not tracked and are not included in these statistics. The following table details operating costs for, of the, uh, rink concession, which included maintenance of the rink Thursday to Monday. As you can see by the table, there was a general, uh, uh, operating loss of a total operating loss of seventeen thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The twenty twenty-two, twenty-three season saw significant challenges due to staffing challenges and attended. Uh, or sorry, extended periods of inclement weather. The inclement weather included high winds, cold temperatures and significant snow events that made the rink unusable. This season, a total of three hundred and sixty-four and a half of the quirks hours over sixteen weeks was dedicated to the rink. Uh, operations at a time when this, uh, department typically has a lower workload due to, due to the off season. No overtime costs were incurred, uh, were incurred associated with this project. And the recommendation in front of council is that the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three synthetic outdoor rink operation report be received. Company in this report is the toxicity document that came from the supplier, uh, showing that, the. Basically that there's, um, nothing, uh, that would be considered harmful.
Thank you. Do I have a mover on the recommendation? Moved by counselor by Dell, seconded by counselor Jackson. Sorry. Maybe the whole, thank you. Moved by counselor by Dell and. So further discussion.
Just one comment, if I may, Mayor Wood. It's, I'm, I'm, I thank the, um. The former operations manager for the toxicity document. Uh, this is something we received a couple of years ago because there were. I believe a member of the public that spoke to us regarding the toxicity of this type of, uh. This type of, uh, product. And I'm glad that this was brought forward just to show there were no health reasons. Associated with the, uh, with the, um, skate on. The skating type of product. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on this. So I guess my, I, I have some, just some comments on it here. So. We're just, um, it's just for receipt, but I think that, um. That we should be looking at a, a motion, um, of whether or not we. Move forth with, uh, some of the projects on it. This, um. The skating rink, um, there was funds for the R M I, um, for a cover. I believe in for washrooms, which is washroom slash concession. And there was even, uh, for fire pits. So this is a significant amount of money that's tied to this, which is just all projects. Which are just waiting to, waiting to happen, I think, dependent on what council's decision of, uh, with this rink. There was a previous counselor, Buckley, that, um, that requested this report come to council. I think it is an important one that to come to council. Um, so I think council really should make a, uh, uh, decision on. Where we want to proceed with the, uh, with the, uh, with the rank here. So. I'm going to, uh, so we're just, it's just for receipt. So I'm going to, yes, go ahead.
This letter, uh, this letter, this report was on the agenda, um, back, just I guess when I first started. So the dates on it are from it that time. And it was received for information at that time. So I just wanted to let council know that it has already been received. It went to the April third meeting and it was received for information there. And that was when council asked if it could be brought forward to a committee of the whole. So it doesn't actually have to be received again.
Thank you.
Um, I know that council wished to discuss whether they wanted to keep this program in place.
Yeah. Okay. So I would move that the, uh, skating rink can be dissolved. And that we do not carry forth with any future funds for the cover, the Washington concessions or the fire pits. With it. Um, so I moved that. Um, any further discuss, any discussion on that? Counselor, right now.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Um. From what I understand, it was, uh, uh, some difficulty last year in. Um, finding a contractor to, uh, run the concession, um, and, and the skate rental. Um, which is unfortunate. Um, I was on council when this. Which is unfortunate. I was on council when this project came forward. And the first year that the skating rink was in place was a. Tremendous success and I know that there were some. Kind of further visions, as you said, to use that space in in the off season to create. A little bit more of a best of. As a draft off season for a tourist, but in my opinion, it. It appears that attendance at the rink has steadily declined. And putting forward and, you know, putting out the funds of. You know, seventeen and a half thousand dollars for maintenance with not getting a lot of that in return. I may support the motion that we resolve the link. And I would suggest that um. It possibly can recoup some costs by offering it for sale. The um. The rink when it was purchased was actually used, so. Hopefully there'll be some other municipality that. Uh, would take up on the offer, so. Um, a friendly amendment. Maybe to your motion, mayor, is to dissolve the project with a. To direct staff. To offer it for up for sale. Thank you.
Thank you. So I accept that amendment, just.
Yeah, sorry to to step in. I would caution council because I'm not sure because it was purchased. Through the R M I, whether we have the actual ability to be able to sell it. So I would want to do a little bit further research to see if that is even an option. Um, it's one thing to have it set aside and stored and not used, but to put it up for sale may. May or may not be an option.
Did you wish to?
Through you, Mayor Wood, um, to our C A O that I certainly would appreciate it because. Uh, doing the research on that because if it is indeed an option, then I think we should. Go forward with that. So with that, I'll. And scar C A O to come up with another report. On the the ability to to sell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. I um, I did, I disagree with the recommendation. This um. Um, and we respect to my colleague to my right, this this hall that we sit in now. Is is quite a costly hall to the community and we get very little revenue from it. Um, the rink, you know, we're a few weeks ago, we were talking about um. Creating another um children's play area on one of our parks and that's. On on the backbone to September, here's here we have a rink that's. I mean, there's never a guarantee that you're going to make a profit on these things and only in most cases are the last. So I think that we, the rink was purchased through the resort municipality. And it's in no cost excepting for the operation to the to the village. Uh, and I think it's something that we should keep. Um, I have had comments from residents who are thinking of having a winter. A winter market in that sort of area and this would be an added addition to have this. I mean. We're in the hands of weather. In the winter months, it's unfortunate, but um the the ground itself. Part of that money was spent to resurface that area as well, so it would take. Uh, the the flat surface of this type of rink, so I personally, I think we should keep it. It's um, it ain't going to cost us anything to keep it and it could be used at later time. I'm not saying it should be put out every year, but I think that we 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 should give it some consideration. Uh, that it is an amenity that is, it is a pleasure. It's unfortunate that we cannot. Uh, installed it earlier in the year because of the boat launch, because I think it would get much more use. From the school, the schoolchildren, they've approached me on this as well, not the children, the um. The the folks there in regards to having it earlier in the year so they could use it more, so um. But unfortunately, due to the parking for the boat launch, it's probably not feasible, but then. I think it's something that I personally will be voting against the recommendation anyway.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, worship. I actually think I was born with skates on and I had the opportunity as a child to skate on Big Lakes. When I saw this originally, I never cared for it. To me, it was much too small and too contained. The weather had a huge effect effect on it. If it had a canopy over the top, it might be more usable. And I just don't really see it as a viable alternative to skating. Thank you.
Thank you. Just add to that, too. I mean, the you put a cover over it. Anyone that has a cover here. Knows that the wind blows, so the cover, the cover does 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 really any, does nothing. Um, we look at the cost of the cover and and I I don't recall the exact amount, but I thought it was somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars. Plus, so when we say there's no cost to us, there's an additional hundred thousand dollars. That we have not spent that we could spend on something else. There's these fire pits, which I don't agree to, which is part of the that whole. Um, brink part, so obviously there's costs associated with that. The washrooms are being renovated to hold a concession. Um, and I believe that was at the somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand dollars. So we're over half a million dollars. That plus that we would have to add to this just to keep up to with what we want. We have a, we have an issue with the contractor wanting to run this. And we are running a concession, which is on, which is, which is in competition with. With the businesses that that we that we have here, which was one of the reasons why it was put in to begin with. So I I can't see how we can continue to keep putting this kind of money into into it and. Maybe the intent was good. I personally have managed ice rinks for some of the largest ice. Producers here in the lower mainland and we wouldn't, we wouldn't think of using something like this for for skating. Um, it 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 is interesting to know, you know, most people don't realize, but just down at the main hotel there. That the old, it's just been used for storage now, but that's an old curling rank. So that goes back from, I believe it was nineteen seventy, mid nineteen seventies or centennial. Nineteen seventy five, there you go, sir. So you know, it's a shame that something like that isn't still in existence today. And it sure would be nice to be able to bring some of that stuff back to the community. So I would really like to see us put this one to bed here and and start changing our focus on something that's. Something that's a little more practical for for the community as a whole. Further discussion on this, seeing done and ready to call the question, so. So the motion then is to dissolve this rink and to refer it back to staff for the option of selling it. So that was moved by myself, so call the question, all in favor. Opposed, motion passes with counselor Fazio opposed. We still have a few minutes for Ryan.
I just to let you counsel have an update, I texted Ryan and he told me he's on his way and that was about. Five, seven minutes ago, somewhere in there, so he is on his way.
Thank you. Did we want a recess? Yeah, yeah, let's have a recess, yes, recess for five, five minutes? Ten minutes. Like all this meeting back to order? So. The chief, to our chief administrative officer, did you want to start this one here or do we want Ryan just to come up or? What was that?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, um. The next person on the agenda would be Ryan Sherriott. Uh, emergency planning coordinator regarding the emergency evacuation route. I can see our fire chief is here. And the fire chief from Kent, Agassi is here as well.
Thank you. Did you guys, did you guys want to come up to the podium and? So I don't know, Ryan, if you had a long speech you wanted to give us or you want us to start asking questions or did you have?
Probably easiest if you ask questions, what you have in front of you is pretty much the most current, up to date that we're at with the evacuation route, so. Yeah.
And and is that as per that document that we have here that's on page one oh nine?
That should be file fifty forty five dash twenty.
No, you must have a different one then. Yes, okay, we have that one, too.
Yeah, dated June eighteenth, twenty twenty.
Page, page one ten of ours. Did you want to, Ryan, can you just go over this with us, please?
Yep. So. Through the joint emergency committee. Basically, recommendations on a, an emergency evacuation route or essentially an alternate evacuation route. A couple of plans are put together on directions that could have gone out from the village of Harrison through the north. And through the district of Kent through the north and the one that was settled on was the one. Those the most economical, which was to go through Parks Canada and then connect to. Road name, Ruby Creek Forest Service Road, which is a maintained forest service road. And then through that, there was planning and funding to. Construct that well. Plan that route. And now we're kind of in the phases of working with Parks Canada to. Remove a section of the park temporarily so that work can be done. So that the route can be established and then reinstall that route or reinstall that area back in Parks Canada's boundaries. And through local coordination and what local First Nations are looking for for that road and access and lack of access, so. Um, for instance, it not be a thoroughfare, it's not accessible to anybody until it's needed as an emergency evacuation route.
Sorry, Mayor Wood, I apologize. I should have reconvened the meeting when before I said what I said. Can we reconvene the meeting first? A motion to reconvene.
A motion to reconvene. All in favor, passes unanimously. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Okay, so did we have any counselors that would just like to ask some questions on this or I have a bunch, but. Counselor by Dell.
Thank you, Mayor Wood, through you to Ryan. I know that at the time this was approved, one of the concerns that was raised. At the joint committee was maintenance. Um, of of the access has, whose responsibility that would be? Do we have any further clarification on on that yet as this date? Thank you.
Excuse me while I turn and look in there. We do not have clarification on that yet.
You have to drag him up. Thank you. So maybe I'm going to ask a few questions here because I wasn't part of a lot of the history on this here. Uh, and I see the year, the thing is that we've been working on it for twenty years. Um, and my understanding is for the last two, three years that it's been kind of stuck at the provincial government level. And there happens, there's some issue with going through the park. So we had, we had a gentleman that came here to counsel two meetings ago, John Coles, I believe was his name. Um, it was about a forty fifty page report that he had done and it was. It's quite an informative report, all to do with just the evacuation route going through Sasquatch Park. And all the reasons why we shouldn't go that way. Have you had a chance? Um, have you had a chance to actually review that and did you have any actual comments at all on that one?
I have had a chance to review it and Chief Baston has actually rebutted most of those quite effectively. Um, that the process and the project that we have set out is still the best direction. And that will be, I would assume a report that would come eventually here to to counsel in Harrison. As a rebuttal of all of the points that Mr. Coles made during his presentation.
So there's a report that's coming through to to counseling. I just didn't quite hear all of the comment.
I'll let Chief Baston speak to that. Sorry, so the uh. I was in attendance the evening when John Coles presented, Mr. Coles, and since that I've provided answers to. The district council administration team and council and those will be produced at our next Kent Harrison Joint Emergency Preparedness Meeting. Which I believe is scheduled in August. Um, from there, there was no correspondence from Harrison through to the district, so I don't believe they're replying to any of it, so. At this point, it'll it'll come up at the joint committee meeting.
So that, so you you hadn't seen that, the document that that John Coles had done before then?
I hadn't.
That's a new, that that was the new document?
That wasn't new. That was old. That was an old document that he revised. We'd seen that one, I believe it was dated twenty twenty.
Oh, okay, so there's a different document that's.
No, same one. He just revised it and and brought it to your council meeting.
Okay, okay, thank you. So. I guess. From what I can tell, it's been sitting at the province for a number of years. So what is it that? Without having to wait for to go through Kent and come all the way back to us here and stuff, what is it that's holding it up? Is it the province that's holding it up because it's parkland?
Correct, it's it's in the park.
It's still the park issue.
Park. It's a park issue as well as uh. As Deputy Chief Schrott had 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 mentioned, it's a, we're consulting with the the First Nations that have an interest in the in the area as well. Nearing completion of that consultation period now.
Is that Swiss Seabird?
Oh, there's a number of them. Seabird, Squaw Luke, Yale, First Nations, I believe, Union Bars in there. And there's one other. On the hope side of things, Spazam as well.
And that's all just to do with that one exit there? Incredible. So. I see that this again, this report that was in twenty twenty, I, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to make it so that we can finally start to move and make a decision on this. It's been twenty years and it seems to be going in circles. So from what I can see from the report from John Coles, there's no question in my mind that that and that's from my own opinion here. Is that 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 looks that of the direction that we should not be going, the environment, that environment there is. I think is critical to it. So I noticed that on this report that you guys had done back in. The one that you were reading, June eighteenth, twenty twenty. It has two other alternatives and actually just help me understand the the other alternatives here. Which is um. Harrison East Fraser. Uh, F S R to Boston Bar. Are you able to help make comment on that one at all?
Yeah, yeah. So Harrison East F S R to Boston Bar is a little over a hundred and fifty kilometers. It is only accessible by high ground clearance, four wheel drive vehicles. And most of those won't attempt that in a year. Uh, it's basically an A T V route at best. Um, and the distance required would not be acceptable in an emergency evacuation manner. The duration to evacuate, you would, everybody would have to have topped up fuel tanks to even make it that far on that type of road. It's definitely not an acceptable route out. It's definitely not an acceptable route out. The second option was Slalacum Peak Forest Service Road, which I believe even in Mr. Coles' report states that it has high sloping, dangerous dropaways on the sides of the roads. Combined with, it would need large bridge spans installed in the tune of over a half million dollars for some of the bridge spans and maintenance on said bridge spans. And our last option, which is to go through the park, is connect a old railway service grade that's already there to an existing forest service road access on both sides that are maintained on both sides. And it is the shortest distance across.
Do you happen to know, I saw there was some dollar figures here that was in this for option three? Do we have any dollar figures, what it would be for option, the first two that, option one or two?
I would have to consult the original plan on that. I'm not sure if they even, I don't think they even quoted on those simply due to how unserviceable they were to run as an evacuation route.
So this, this appears then that Kent hired a consultant to actually look specifically at this evacuation route?
Yep.
That. And that was done in? Was this done in 2020? I'm just trying to look for it here.
When onsite did it?
The onsite engineering?
This is either 2020 or 2021.
And it was done by onsite engineering?
Yes.
So is that report, did you know that report at all has been, is available to to counsel?
I'm going to say, yeah, but it go through Corporate Services of the District. That's their.
Okay.
That's their gig, what gets released and doesn't.
Yeah, I know you guys must be just as frustrated at trying to get this, this thing here dealt with. I appreciate you guys being here. And we have a lot of different groups involved with it here. I think I have a few other meetings this week just on the same conversation. So, you know, you've got a lot of interest, you've got a lot of different thoughts, but someone's got to make up their mind in which way we're going to go and, and, and start to run with this here. Counselor Bidel?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Just wanted to let counsel know that one of my request for a meeting with the minister at UBCM was to meet with the appropriate minister in order to get an update and to advocate that, that we do move forward as quickly as possible with this. And if we are successful in having a meeting with the minister, then certainly will be, I think it would be appropriate to invite representatives from Kent Council to also attend. I having attended the meetings where the report and, and, and the discussion did take place on this Second Egress Route, it, it was, became very clear to me that the most viable route was the one up Rockwell and, and through the park and, and out to Ruby Creek. And having said that, previous council, this council and Kent endorse that recommendation. And from what I'm hearing from Ryan, that there, although frustrating as it is, there has been some movement forward on it. I know I don't want to see it take another 20 years. But I appreciate the, the effort that you're doing. And to Mayor Wood and, and the rest of council here that rather than going through another whole process of looking at and consultation for an alternate route, I think the best course of action is just to continue on in the, in the direction that they're going. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson?
Thank you, worship. These dollars figures that you've quoted in the report I have, are they in 2020 dollars or 2023?
Those would be 2020.
2020?
Yep. So there would be movement from inflation from that, yes.
There could be maybe double in today's dollars.
It's hard to tell with today's dollars with the radical fluctuations that we do see, but it's not out of the question.
Thank you.
Yep. Welcome.
Also passing. Sure. So, so just, just the last question here that I had. So, excuse me. Sorry about that. So what does the village have in as far as the emergency exit plan? In case of, say wildfire, specifically wildfire, do we actually have a plan in place?
There currently is a CWPP plan for the village Harrison.
What, what, sorry, what did you call it, Ryan?
Community wildfire protection plan.
So there is.
And that was done in 2018.
And that actually has incorporates an emergency exit plan for.
I believe it's requirement 39, where they suggest that there be a, a secondary emergency evacuation route out of Harrison Hot Springs.
So does it give us specifics of, of if all of a sudden that we have a wildfire that, that comes through here and we have to evacuate, does it give us any specifics other than Hot Springs Road to get out? Does it?
I think because nothing has been established, no.
So.
It just says that the establishment of an emergency evacuation route is something that should be considered and or planned for.
So we really don't have an actual plan itself on the emergency exiting?
Other than Harrison Hot Springs Road to the south.
I mean, I've lived here a few enough years now to see when after our Canada Day celebrations there. And you can see the traffic that's backed up here. Even, even if Hot Springs Road is 100% open, you know, what could come, what could begin from that there? I, we have actually nothing in place that actually deals with a scenario in that, in that magnitude.
That's what this is. Yeah, yeah. Other, and I mean, other than the difference between, say, Canada Day and an emergency evacuation is you would have the appropriate police services or traffic control persons stopping and moving traffic without delay. So the normal stopping points that you would see, which would be like the seven and nine or those areas would be free flowing for traffic out of Harrison Hot Springs, along with traffic control through town.
So that would be a dedicated person that's part of the plan that knows that that's his corner to go to, seven and nine?
That would be consulted with the RCMP per an emergency evacuation as necessary.
So the RCMP are communicating then with someone such as yourself? Or the fire chief that's on duty or like help me through that, just to understand.
So in the event of large scale wildfire, you'd stand up your EOC, you'd have an incident, you'd have an incident commander on scene or working that area. You'd have your director in your EOC and those, if the, if the direction became to evacuate from the area, then with those consulting parties in the operations area, you would work out not, maybe not pre-established, but the fastest way to get people out of the area as possible.
So, so would it be yourself that would be taking charge of that? Or is it the RCMP? Just, just help me out. I know you said some, you said it's some previous acronyms sometimes that.
So a, if you were Incident Command Officer, Incident Command Post, who would essentially be maybe the first person on scene who's taking control of the scene as it's unfolding. If you were to require RCMP's assistance, it would become a joint operation, like joint. For instance, I wouldn't tell the RCMP what to do, but they would come in with their leading expert or whoever might be in charge. And I would say, I require you to do this with your people and you need to report back to us. And we work together jointly to make the operation as smooth as possible. And they likewise don't tell FIRE what to do on scene. We work together to say, you do your portion, we do our portion, everybody that resides in the area gets out or is as safe as possible.
So when they, when you said that, that first, I know you said the, the incident command is that, again, bear with me. And I'm trying to make it so other people that are watching this, that they, they can understand what it is we're trying to say too. So i- is that the RCMP or is that the fire department?
It would be, it's typically the first arriving agency on scene. So that could be Harrison Fire Department, that could be Agis Fire Department, that could be the RCMP. And as more agencies show up, we start working in a joint command operation.
Okay. So, so assume that, and again, I appreciate you guys being, but so the RCMP, let's assume it's the RCMP. So they show up. Meanwhile, I guess they're monitoring what's happening with the fire chief to say a fire that's in, in the village. And the fire chief is going to be making comment to the RCMP that we're going to go to an evacuation. Is that kind of, like, give it to me in simple, if you can, try to explain that process in simple words.
Just, yep.
So the people understand.
So if we had a fire in the village and it was deemed that we needed to evacuate, in this case, it would be a tactical evacuation. There is no time to plan and say, we're going to give alerts and then evacuation orders. It's a tactical evacuation, all hands on deck. They're basically going to be going door to door, knocking on doors and telling people in your vehicles, leave now. You have no time to grab anything. You have to leave right now. They're given a direction out. So that's pre-discussed before going around and doing that tactical evacuation. If that pre-discussion is you're heading southbound on Harrison Hot Springs Road and you are leaving and the muster station, if you will, or joint collective area for people to go to is the CRCC or the, the agricultural hall in, in Kent, then that's where people would go for emergency support services or evacuation services. And as FIRE and RCMP collectively, you might bring your public works in with it to do that tactical evacuation door to door. Search and rescue might also come in to assist with that. And you're basically going around and around, making sure that those who are told to leave, leave. There's a whole bunch of other nuances with that where people don't necessarily have to leave their properties, but we, we would like them to because.
So. Come to you later. Thank you for explaining that. But if for some reason that Hot Springs Road was overwhelmed or there was an incident, another accident, I mean, you never know what, what, what can happen in this situation. In, in, I don't, maybe I shouldn't, I'm not going to ask you the question, but I'm going to hint the question. Would it not make sense to go up the Forest Service Road to at least drive away from the incident and possibly hope for some sort of helicopter or water rescue?
So two parts to that, I would say, any direction away from the fire is probably a good direction. The, the second part to that would be which way is the fire moving? And if it happened to me and you weren't expecting it or a sudden wind change, which is very common around here. If you had gone that direction and just as likely heading out of town on a nice paved road, if you headed up the Forest Service Road and blew a tire and everybody was stuck behind you, you are just as stuck as everybody else trying to leave the other direction. As for marine operations, there's absolutely nothing in place for marine operations other than search and rescue to come and move. I would probably guess, less than 10 people at a time safely on their boats. And, and once you have them, where do they go? You're going to have to ferry them down Harrison River. Is the river high enough to get down? What time of year is it? Is the operator? So I'm trying to think of the word I'm looking for, but basically used to going down Harrison River because it has its own tricks to get down if you're not used to going down it. Direction being one of them, not just straight down the middle of it. You will hang up down there.
Okay.
And the helicopter portion of it, as much as we had the Corman helicopters out assisting us, that does take time to get them out. And you need an area pretty large to land them in that is tree free. That's not necessarily the case up Rockwell Drive.
So a helicopter, could they land on that forest road up there or?
Not those, not those Corman units. They're far too large for that. They could probably land at Greenpoint. But that would already be the limit of our area as it is.
Yeah.
And maybe Silver River. And that's about 30 kilometers up, 40 kilometers up. So vehicles would have to get to that point too.
Thank you. So, so just so now that I understand where, with where we are now here. So we're waiting for the provincial government to get back to whether or not we can put it through Sasquatch Park. So Counselor Bidel, so you were saying that you were hoping to meet with them sometime in, in the later part of this year to get some sort of input into that?
Yes, Mayor Wood, at UBCM and through local or mainland LGA councils are encouraged to request meetings with ministers. You're not always provided that, but I, I have put that request in. UBCM is about the middle of September, though. I have not heard back yet through our staff whether that request has been approved or, or not. But it certainly is one, one way to make the minister and minister staff aware and with a 20-year delay and, and to request and advocate to move this ahead as, as quickly as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So, so that being said, that could take years.
We certainly hope not, but.
Tell us what you, how can we help? How can we speed this up? What is it that you guys need in your, how do you see it? What frustrates you?
Advocacy for the route. The more people we have on board with it, the more councils and the more First Nations that we have on board with it that are, that approve of the route and approve of the direction to, for the safety and security of both residents of the District of Kent and Harrison Hot Springs and people who use and play on the Forest Service Road, the better.
So, so now where you, so this, like I said, so there's other committees behind the scenes here which are asking questions and working towards all this. What is it that you see that, that we can do to help get that part of it moved along? Do I?
Right now, support through the Joint Emergency Committee that we have in place is top priority. As Chief Baston spoke earlier, the local First Nations around, I believe we're only at one left that we need a consultation answer from regarding that. The rest have approved and are on board with that route and the planning that we have in place to run that route through. So advocacy from councils towards the emergency program like committee would be what we need to move forward. Working with the ministry and working with the province, they want to see everybody on board so that nobody says we didn't want that.
So that's what you perceive as, as one of the issues holding it up. So do we know which committee or which group is, is, we're still waiting for the response from Counselor Bidel?
And indigenous community, it's just like, no, I'm, I'm not, I'm not aware of that, but I'm happy to hear that we're moving forward. And I, I, I know consultation with First Nations often takes considerable times. So no, I'm sorry, Mayor Wood, I don't know who that First Nations is. Thank you.
Are you able to share that with us tonight?
The, I believe the remaining one that we're waiting for an answer from is Squaw Luke.
Okay, that's, that's, I think that's very helpful. Good. Thank you. Counselor Jackson?
Thank you, worship. On previous councils that I was on, we made personal delegations to the minister in Victoria. On previous councils that I was on, we made personal delegations to the ministers in Victoria. We went and made a presentation and we found them very successful. In the light of what's happening in Tofino now with one road in the, the problems they have. This has been brought to the forefront of what we need to do. So perhaps council can look at making a delegation to Victoria to the appropriate ministers. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fasson?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Oh, being one of the oldest involved in this whole situation, I think it originally came from Sylvia Prang, or Mayor Prang many years ago. Who got this whole situation moving. I just, for those who are listening on Zoom, I just want to let them know that our emergency committee that we've had if the years have done an outstanding job. And they've had several scenarios over the years to practice what may or what could happen. And they're very well trained and knowledgeable, as I'm sure our fire department is in their respective roles in organizing emergencies. I mean, the one thing that we learn at these meetings is that when there is an emergency, the province and the locals all come together to, to work out the best way to protect people. So the, the situation originally started with the route to Hicks Lake. That was the first one many years ago. And then we went on to this Mahood, Mahood Creek situation. The former MLA we used to have is said at that time that it was a Class C park and they would need an order in council, which wasn't a big thing to do in Victoria to release that portion. So we could get this whole thing moving. I know Gerald, who was our coordinator for many years, worked really hard with the committee and with Harrison and Kent in, in trying to get this plan moving forward very quickly. The situation prior to John Coles was we had a hike, we had a group here who were very adamant about that section of road being used as well. But when it was explained that it is only for an emergency, it's not an opening for tourists to use it from Ruby Creek to Harrison. It's just for pure emergency, there'd be a gate there, it would be closed. And we've had the provincial people at these meetings, the cost has gone up tremendously from what it originally was for that, for that route. So unfortunately, these things happen. But I can assure the people who are listening that the Emergency Coordination Committee, which I sat on for many years, they do an outstanding job. They're well versed in what's going on. I believe that at one point that Gerald even got an assessment from CP Ralph on what was coming through the district to Kent as far as chemicals were concerned. And they did a, a mock-up scene and what could happen. If there was a spill there, just as a, a question, Gerald. Trains coming back from the city, back going east, I suppose, through Agassi. Are they, are, do, do they come with, with containers filled or they, they're not all empty, are they? That's what I thought. We had a con- Yeah, yeah, because we had a, we, we had a comment here a couple of meetings ago, say that they come back empty and we thought there's something wrong there. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. But no, I think we're good hangs. It's unfortunate situation that this, the holdup, we did the assessment. Got the grant years ago to do that assessment. And the lobbying, of course, as Counselor Jackson says, is always a good thing to do. It's it's always worked in the past and we'll lobby as much as we can. But I think the people expect any, any emergency route of some kind. I know in nineteen ninety-nine, we were all lined up at Seabed Island to register, because we had a, we were on the verge of a very bad flood in the, in the area. And we were all registering there to, for accommodations and all that sort of stuff, but it didn't happen, thank God. But I think, I think that it's a waiting game. We have to be patient. We just keep lobbying and I want to thank our emergency team here. And I'm glad our, our chief is here as well from our fire department, because I know they all work together with this whole situation. But like this gentleman here says, the coordination in the emergency just depends how that happens. Who gets there first and who starts the ball rolling and who takes command like you do at fire scene. So thank you very much for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. The other discussion on this. So, so Counselor, just to understand, Counselor Jackson, so you were talking about like a delegation. So that would be a delegation through the Joint Emergency Program. I'm just trying to understand if we need to create maybe a letter or something that to help move it along. Counselor Jackson, are you able to?
The delegations that we made to Victoria, the council made were to a specific minister. One of the problems which is, was occurring at that particular nine-year stretch that the government at the time were changing ministers all the time. It seemed to be much more stability with the new government to have a minister in for three or four years. So you had continuity of what is getting done. And I would actually think that council should really look at that idea of doing that. It may just help push this through in light of what's happening today.
So would you, would you like to move a, did you have a motion? You'd like to move on that then, Counselor?
So what?
So you would move to create?
I'd like to move that council look at the idea of having a delegation to Victoria to the minister in charge. And that we have a specific plan laid out to give to them. And, and the need to get something done now rather than push that down the road and down the road. In my term, it's seventeen years we've been pushing this down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. For the discussion on that subject, let me call the question on all in favor. That's motion passage unanimously. Thank you. Hopefully that helps a little bit. And again, just listening to yourselves and I think for the people to be able to hear a little bit with all the wildfires and stuff that's going on. And to our fire chief back in, back there again, thank you guys for coming and I just greatly appreciate it. Absolutely. Thank you. Go ahead. Just, just one sec, guys.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. I represent Harrison on, on that committee. So I will certainly coordinate with you and I know more information and perhaps the two of you could meet and we can make sure we're on, all on, on the same page and providing us with any of the documentation that you believe or think may be, may be helpful if we meet with them and minister. Thank you.
Did our chief, just a question, does the chief administrative officer, does he have any questions on that?
No. No, I think that's good, but what I might recommend is that we have the UBCM coming up and maybe that might be an opportunity to capture one of the ministers. And I don't know if Kent has someone available or I'm sure that you'll be having representation there as well. Might be an opportunity to join both teams together and, and approach a minister there.
Thank you.
It will have to be UBCM now, I'm afraid. Mayor Wood, because I believe another two weeks and the House will disperse till October. So UBCM is, is, is arrangement can be made within the next week for a delegation to Victoria.
Counselor?
Just one follow up. Normally, the ministers don't leave Victoria. The council, the parliament may be paroled, but the minister's still our job.
Okay, okay. So we're good. Yes, go ahead to our chief administrative officer.
Yeah, thank you, sir. I, I just wanted to say that I think trying to put something together within a week to be able to set up a delegation might be a bit of a challenge. So I think if we aim for the UBCM dates and maybe council can give direction and, and exactly who wants to see like maybe members from the district of Kent and representatives from village council can maybe prepare a meeting with them.
Thank you. So is there anything further we need to do on that? Is where you go? Good thing. And thank you, guys. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, worship. Thank you, counselors.
Thank you. Call for, do I have a mover for adjournment? Passes unanimously. We are adjourned.